This meeting, the zoning Board of Appeals meeting, October 20th, 2022. It's after seven o'clock. So Chris Campillo is here, Chris CD, myself Jeff Yonkis acting as chairman tonight, and Jerry Noble. We only have four members present, so. First thing on the agenda, first thing, hopefully nobody here is recording this session. We don't like it. It's being recorded by Lake Camp and it can be being broadcast right now. So the first thing on the agenda is the Dixon hearing. It's continued on 36 Main Street. It is to add a dog park. You can get up and say your piece, but we've heard this.
Well, it's just add an napper for the dogs to sleep in.
Right.
It's not to house any more dogs or bought anymore overnight. It's just strictly a napper for them to sleep in from 12 to 2 during the day when they're there during daycare. That's all it's for.
Okay. I have the, yeah, can you identify yourself?
Wayne Doherty. I work for Julia Dixon.
Okay. Also, I'd like to, this, this is a new plan, and we, I don't know how you guys do this, but need a motion to approve it, to put it into the record?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
The plan first. We need the plan. This is a revised plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make motion to approve the special, the big plan. Sorry.
Can I second that?
Okay, this is plan of record. Okay? Number two. Does any of the board members have anything else? Questions? Comments? Anybody in the public have any questions or comments? I entertain a motion.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
It was fairly old, like last month, but she couldn't make that meeting. It was filled with the parking.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Second item is the Bennett hearing, 15 Summit Avenue. I will read the notice. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Laws 48, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Crescent Street. Upon the petition of David Bennett, a special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4.6 and a variance under 5.1 is requested to install a 9-by-12 deck and a 12-by-10 sunroom, which would be within the setback of a pre-existing non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 157th Avenue. The application and assorted documents can be viewed at the Planning Department by appointment or at the Town of Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals webpage. Do we have anybody here representing Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, we need him.
Come forward. What do you have to say?
I'm trying to build a new sunroom, and they told me I had to have my Title V done first, which has already been completed.
Okay.
Everything's been signed off on, and they told me to submit my application here to zoning with 17 copies, which have all been submitted to all of you.
All right. I have a copy of it.
I've spoken to all of the neighbors. Nobody has an issue with it. They're all looking forward to seeing it.
Okay. Then I will read comments from, first from the Board of Health. This is 15 Summit Avenue. We received a copy of the petition for the hearing for 15 Summit Avenue. Since the addition of the deck and the sunroom do not encroach upon the existing septic, the sunroom is not classified as a bedroom. In addition, will not affect the existing septic system. Thus, the Board of Health has no obligations to the proposed addition. And then I have one from the Planning Board. Dated October 14th, 2022, it's a subject to petition review for Bennett, 15 Summit Avenue. As their Thursday, September 22nd, 2022 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. That is about all I have on. Has everybody looked at the plan? Anybody have any comments?
Do you have a copy of the plan?
Yes, I do.
What are the dimensions of the existing porch?
All it really is, the porch that's there is, you walk out the back door and it's like a four foot by six foot. It's just the small area right there. The rest is patio. It's just ground dirt patio.
Okay.
Is that?
That's just here.
There's a video I can show it to you.
Right here?
Yeah, this is the, yeah, this is Summit right here. Okay, so this is where the front door of the house is. This is where the side door of the house is. This is going to come off, and that's where the sunroom and the deck will be.
Okay.
Actually, that's the old, that's the existing right now. If you go down, see there, you go right there. Okay, so that's going to be, this is enclosed, the 10-by-12, and that's going to be the deck right there, which is actually where that door is there, it's going to block out under that deck.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
What's the setback from West Steria Street?
West Steria?
Yeah.
Ah, 37 feet? They said it was well within where it needed to be.
Okay.
So the addition is just a continuation, the footprint of the house?
More or less, yeah. I'm having one of those, I'm trying to have one of those sunroom, you know, patio sunroom enclosures done.
Yep.
That's what it is, basically. So they built the deck and then enclosed the sunroom part, and I didn't really want 20 feet of sunroom. That was a little much, so they said, well, we'll just put a little deck here on that side.
Right. And the distance, so the distance to Summit Ave is the same, and it's the house.
Yeah, exactly, yes. It's not, we're not moving any closer to Summit Ave, and the distance that it's coming closer to West Steria is part of now dirt patio before it's even the paved driveway part. It's all just dirt.
Yes.
Basically, putting this over the dirt patio that's just sitting there.
Okay.
Okay. Any more comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing done. What is your pleasure, guys?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay?
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Kathy, you want to give it the spiel?
Yep, the board has 14 days to complete the paperwork, and it goes to the town clerk, where it stays for 20 days. So if there's no appeals, then she'll sign it, and I'll contact you, and we can either mail it out, or you can come in and get it, and then you have to record that, the registered dates, before you can get a permit.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Senna hearing at 103 Staple Shores Road. The Lakeville, I'll read the, the ad, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, in acting in accordance with Mass Law, General Laws, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Crescent Street, upon the petition of Donald Senna. A special permit, permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requested to demolish an existing 910-foot square foot non-conforming dwelling and construct a similar 950-square-foot dwelling that may be within the setbacks on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located at 103 Staple Shores Road as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is owned by Donald T. and Susan E. Senna. A special permit has been granted for this proposal on July 30th, 2020, but has expired. The application and assorted documents can be viewed at the Planning Board by appointment or at the Lakeville, or Town of Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals webpage.
Good evening. My name is Richard Riome. I'm chief engineer at Prime Engineering, and we prepared the plans. I've blown up the 11-by-17 sheet that was submitted to you. On, on the very right is Asylums at Pond, and running through the center is a right-of-way, which is Staple Shores Road. It's just an easement, gravel. There's an existing garage with a paved area on the north side with an existing septic system, and this is the existing dwelling with stone patio in the front, stone patio alongside and a driveway, and then grass. And that's existing conditions. Building was built 80 years ago, and the proposal is to build essentially the same-sized structure in the same location, again, have a little farmer's porch in the front, leave the paved blocks in the front and the blocks here. We're going to remove the paved driveway and put seashells in here so that we meet the impervious criteria that the town has. So the structure is currently in the floodplain. We're going to bring it out of the floodplain, provide flood vents on all four sides so that the water can come in and go out. We're also going to make the thing comply with current energy codes. It's an 80-year-old house, so it's, it's tired and it's not, you know, compliant with the current energy codes. So it's basically replacing the building with a, with a better building. We submitted to you elevation views of the structure, and it's comparable to high, you know, New England architecture. And as we said, you granted the permit a few years ago, but because of high cost of materials and poor availability during COVID, it just was impractical to move ahead. Now the materials are available and the prices are down, so Mrs. Senna wants to go ahead and make the improvements.
I think I was here for the last one.
Yeah.
Well, I'll read you the comments from the Board of Health. This is part of a letter, but this, this part pertains just to 103 Staple Shores Road. This is Board of Health. We received a copy of the petition for the hearing for 103 Staple Shore Road. The prime engineering plans dated April 3rd, 2020, show a proposed dwelling reconstruction of an existing three-bedroom residential dwelling with an onsite sewage disposal system. Since the onsite sewage disposal system is to remain unchanged, and the proposed dwelling remains a three-bedroom dwelling, and if the number of rooms in the proposed dwelling does not exceed eight, not including bathrooms, hallways, or unheated storage areas, then this existing septic system should be sufficient for the proposed dwelling, provided it passes the required Title V inspection. Therefore, based on the information provided to the Board of Health, there is no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial due to public health issues at this time. Then I have one from the Planning Board, dated October 14th, 2022. Petition review for Senna, 103 Staple Shore Road. At their Thursday, October 13th, 2022 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. Did any of the, everybody's seen, hopefully have seen the packet, which is presented up there. Is there any comments or questions from the board?
Are there any differences between what you presented in '20 versus today?
No.
Much additional height to get up out of the flood?
We're raising it about a foot and a half. It's, it's just into the floodplain, and we're raising it so it's over a foot above the existing floodplain.
I, I think the flood elevation was at 54, upon this 54 elevation.
Uh, maybe 56.
It's up to 56 they raised it?
I think it's 56, yeah.
Okay. Because when we had that big flood, it exceeded whatever was there.
Yeah.
As long as you have some cushion and built into it. Any other comments from the board?
So it's essentially remove and replace.
Yes.
Right.
Are there any comments from the public? What is your wish, guys?
I'd make a motion to accept the plans as submitted.
Okay. All in favor?
Second.
Ah, second. Somebody's.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the form.
The petition? All, do you have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's take care of that. Next on the agenda is a, the residence at La Baron LLC, La Baron Hills LLC hearing. I would recuse myself if there was a, any information or anything to be heard, but this is just a continuance. I have a letter here from Mohammed Atami. Subject is, Mark, we have kindly request to continue the ZBIA hearing on October 20th for the residents at La Baron Hills to November 3rd. I don't know if we should. Mark? At the end, any of the other stuff we should?
No, you shouldn't discuss any of the other issues tonight.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Because you're accusing yourself, you can vote on the mere fact of the.
So I need a motion, guys, to continue the hearing.
I will make a motion to continue the hearing.
Can I have a second?
It's November 3rd.
Yes, we're, we're continue to November, November 3rd.
Right.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's gone. You're ready? Next on the agenda is New Bedford, North Bedford Crossing LLC, 109 Bedford Street. I'll read the legal ad. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, in acting with accordance with Mass General Laws 40B as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Crescent Street. Upon the petition of North Bedford Crossing LLC, a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B was requested to construct 20 three-bedroom homeownership units in 10 duplex-style buildings. Five units, or 25%, will be affordable to households earning up to 80% of the area median income in accordance with applicable state regulations and guidelines. All the units will be sold as condominium units. The project, project will be located at 109 Bedford Street. The application and documents can be viewed in the Planning Department by appointment or on the Town of Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals webpage. Guys, we only have four members, which means you need a supermajority for this. So it is your option if you want to, don't give me any information, or we'll continue it.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Ashonacy, attorney in middle of all for the record. The project proponent would like to go forward with four, four members this evening.
Okay.
My show now?
Your show.
Very good.
Have at it, Mike.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chairman and all the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Michael Ashonacy. I'm here tonight on behalf of North Bedford Crossing LLC. With me tonight is Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers. We are here seeking a comprehensive permit from this board to construct 20 units of housing on 109 Bedford Street. This site, just to, by way of background, there's three jurisdictional elements that need to be satisfied for this application to be properly before this board. The first one is there needs to be a limited dividend requirement, which basically means the project proponent's going to limit the amount of profit he can make on the project. In your application, you'll see a regulatory agreement that was attached in the exhibit. What that is, an agreement between Mass Housing and the developer, and it says he's limiting his profit, and that satisfied that jurisdictional element. That takes, if a permit were to be issued, that would take place between the developer and Mass Housing, and there's an acknowledgement that this board, we would ask the sport to sign, but we can get into that later on. The second component that the, needs to be satisfied is control of the site. The applicant needs to control the site typically, it can be through a lease, PNS, or through deed. In this case, I've submitted a deed with my application. The project proponent is the owner of the site, so control of the site is not an issue. And the third component is you need to have a project eligibility letter from a subsidizing agency in the packet. You'll see a letter from Mass Housing dated April 15th, 2022, that says, we approve this project, but no more than 20 homeownership units can be constructed on the site. So with respect to those three jurisdictional elements, we've checked all the boxes, and this application is properly before you as the permitting authority. As I said earlier on, this property is located at 109 Bedford Street. Site's approximately five acres plus or minus. 95% of the site is upland. There's a small portion of wetland in the rear of the site. The property is currently approved by a single-family residence. It's a green ranch-style home. It's in disrepair. It would need to be, it'll be raised at the end of the project. We're not including it as, as part of the project at all. So we've got a nice portion of the profit, of property to, to work with. The current conceptual plan calls for the construction of 10 duplex-style buildings, 20 units. Can you guys see it? I'm going to turn it over.
I have it on my computer, though.
Oh, you have it on your computer? Okay. Right now, the current design, we've, we've pushed everything forward close to the site, and all the units are staggered together. There'll be an infiltration based on this site and the onsite septic system that, under this current proposal, would be maintained and operated by the condominium association. Right now, there'd be 20 units. They're all three bedrooms. We submitted various styles that would be proposed, but I would like to ask the Board of something here. The project proponent has had a couple of conversations with some of Butters, and the, the feedback they're, we're getting is they would like to see this developed as a single-family residential project. And is that concept plan here? It's on the backside. So what we did in the last few days is we, we scrambled to, to put something together to see if, if the board was inclined to agree to this shifting of gears to, to go forward with this design. It would be 12 single-family residences, three bedrooms each. We'd carve it up into 12 lots. Each lot would have its own septic system. The drainage would be put in the rear of the project still. The only real significant difference is the roadway instead of being stopped halfway through the site, it would project down a little bit more. What we did is we've put the houses on the northern side of the property line because we have some undeveloped lots, and we felt the backyards looking to the woods would be better, and it'd be less impactful to the neighbors to the south. From my perspective, we're comfortable going forward with either design. If the board was inclined to go with the original proposal, I'd have Jamie step up and give you a more detailed presentation on that proposal. If the board is comfortable or suggesting to us that they'd rather see something like this, I'd probably stop speaking tonight and ask this hearing to be continued for a month or so, so we could do some engineering design.
Does the fire department have a chance to look at that option?
This option here, I think the, the option we've talked with the, the fire chief about was basically, he wanted the ability for the fire truck to be able to turn around. So we've got this hammerhead design so that the truck could come in, turn this way, back up, and come out. If we had to, we could throw another hydrant halfway down the road, but I don't see that as being a, a huge issue. He was comfortable with the, it's the same hammerhead design as the original layout, except it's further back now.
Yep. Is he going to have all single-family, are there going to be their own septic systems?
This would be fee ownership, obviously. It wouldn't be a condominium. It would probably be a homeowners association that would take care of the, the maintenance of the roadway, maintenance of the detention area, plowing, and trash removal. So instead of a condominium fee, they'd be paying an association fee.
Are you saying the use number of units, how many would be affordable?
Three. Three. Right now, the, we're looking at 1,400 square foot units to 1,800 square foot units. Some of the units that we're considering would have, could have a bedroom on the first floor, so if there was an older couple who wanted to downsize, this might be something that they would be interested in, and the first floor option, in my experience, it's becoming more and more of a demand and a nice feature to have. So I, I welcome your feedback and, and ask for, for some guidance, direction, what the board is thinking.
Could you ask the audience?
Yes. Does anybody in the audience have a comment or like to say something?
I have some questions.
What are your questions?
Could you actually go to the stand and just announce who you are, where you live?
Yeah.
My name's Charlie Hanley. I live at 5 Paddock Hill Drive, and my first question, can, this, I believe this is me, yeah, right here. What's the setback? What's the setback from the property line on these?
Well, we haven't laid it out, we haven't done any engineering, so I would have to guess, based on what you see there, it's probably 40 feet. I don't, I don't, I don't know, but it could be 50 feet. At the end of the day, once the design is done, it could end up being 25, I don't.
Another question I have is, on the previous plan, I just want to show you what I received. This is the plan I get from the website, and that's all I got, so it doesn't really tell me too much. But the question I have, originally, I read that there was going to be a shared septic system down here somewhere, I believe.
That's right, yeah.
And that's, that wouldn't be the case with this.
If, if this change is allowed, we would propose to subdivide the property into 12 lots. Each lot would have its own septic system.
And I only bring that up because, as you know, we're all on wells, and I know there's some distance there, but I can tell you that in the almost 19 years that we've been at 5 Paddock Hill Drive, this past summer was the first summer that I could hear the water from the well pump. The water level, the pump was at the, the top of the water level was reaching the pump intake, and I could hear it, and I could see it in the hose, and that would be one of my concerns.
Is, 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 do you have that, like, well, well, you, the wells are all towards the front of the sites? Okay.
And also, I read in this plan that I downloaded, that there was going to, that the water was going to come from the street, from the town.
Is there water in the street? Isn't a Bedford water in the street?
Well, there's a fire hydrant right there.
Okay. Just on water there?
Is there enough supply?
Yes, yes, there is.
Yeah.
There is?
Yes.
On Bedford Street?
Yes.
About gas?
I don't know about.
Town of Time, you can fill the water on that street?
Yes, yes. Applications would need to be made by the developer to the Board of Selectmen, who would set aside an allocation out of the Town of Lakeville's allocation from Taunton, based on an intermunicipal agreement that's been in place for a number of years.
I just think it would be easier to prevent than to correct down the road.
Do you, Mr. Chairman? We have applied to the Selectmen, we haven't heard back from them on our request yet. Our intent is to, if the Selectmen approve the allocation, or this board, you folks would act in the shoes of the Selectmen.
Yeah.
You guys could approve the connection, or the Selectmen could approve it, and then we would bring in public water from Route 18 to support the project.
Okay. I, instead of, the question becomes, what do we want to see, 20 duplex, 10 duplexes or 20, or 12 single-family homes? And you don't have the design yet, so.
Right, if this board said, we're willing to make this change, we have no issue to make this change, and it seems that, from what we're hearing, the neighbors would, although they probably don't want to see anything there, they would probably be more in favor of seeing this as opposed to duplex units. We're comfortable with either proposal. I mean, again, if this board said, no, we want to see the duplex units, I'll ask Jamie to give you folks a more detailed presentation.
Yeah.
Could we hear from more of the residents? And thank you for your feedback.
I just had one more question.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
And my last question is, on the earlier plans that I read about, there was some verbiage in there about some planting, or maybe a fence, or something. So I'd like to see, you know, I'm not so much concerned about plantings because we have some woods there, but a fence could be nice.
Mr. Chairman, again, we don't have a final design, we're not opposed to a fence or plantings without, that's something that would be developed in the hearing process.
We know that, we understand that.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
Somebody else in the book.
Thank you.
Come up and identify yourself.
Joe Hamilton.
Just get it.
No, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Anthony Corsteny, I live at 9 Paddock Hill Drive, I'm here with my wife Catherine. Just, it was quite the shock to hear that they wanted to put 20 units right behind our house, basically, but we're here, and it's due process, so we're all talking about this. But we moved to Lakeville from Middleborough, but from Watertown in Leinster previously, and we just loved the rural living here, and it was very, that was like a huge selling point to us. We were told that due to the town zoning laws, that because there's wetlands, and I don't know if this has changed, but there's like a 70,000 square foot per residence rule on the books, at least, as recent as 2017, that nothing could be basically built back here, essentially, so that was like a huge selling point, because it's like, wow, we have like woods, and wildlife, and trees, there's like basically no light pollution in this area, I mean, like, we see so many stars, and we're like, we're really not that far from, you know, you know, easy commuting to 495, and it was like, wow, this is a dream to see stars so close to, you know, the highway and things like that, and it was, it was important stuff, but we, you know, we have deer in our backyard constantly. We have, you know, turkeys and woodchucks, it's woodchuck we named Murray, you know, it's, there's a whole like ecosphere here, you know, like in this, in this area, so like, we're just, you know, we're concerned about the loss of privacy, we're concerned about losing that relaxed state back here, if there was a, the 20-unit, you know, proposal. This, this does seem a lot better than 20 units, I'll say that, at least. We're concerned about the loss of trees, the wildlife habitat, that ecosphere that existed, which I will say, I don't know if it was ever posted, I was living at work one day, I came home, and a lot of trees were already cleared here, and I, I know typically you have to post something, so I do have concerns about like whether or not what moves forward here, if they will follow rules, because there was no posting that when they did work there, and I came back and there was tons of trees, I could see right over to this property right here, it was like, you know, this was last year, I walked, I came back and was like, wow, all these trees are gone, you know, so it's just, just some concern about following procedure, you know? But, you know, we're concerned about seeing the loss of stars at night, a drastic increase of noise, you know, at, at 20 units, that's like, you know, three-bedroom units, you know, that could easily be 60 people living on a five-acre lot, where most of these units here are like three to four people maximum, so we're like in a three to four person per acre situation here. Now you said we want to have like 60, maybe, you know, up to 80 or 100 people possibly living in a situation where you have three bedrooms each, you know, these are, that's a lot of people in a small area, so. There's, you can't see it here, but there's a, there's a historic stone wall that runs along that property, I'm a real history buff, and that was a huge selling point, that was like, wow, like, one of these, one of these old, you know, you know, New England stone walls that runs, you know, through, you know, many areas in this area, there was one in this backyard, and I was like, yeah, you know, I, it was a dream to have that, you know, so it was just, you know, I, I'm concerned about any potential damage to that little piece of history that's right, literally right in my backyard, you know? So I just, I have some questions, like, you know, is it true that there is a 70,000 square foot per residence rule in town? I seen something on the state, something about that. If that is true, how did this even get that far? Because that's, this is way less than that, you know what I mean, like, you know, per residence, you know? The slot is not that large, I mean, I can literally, I am concerned about, you know, I work in events, and we often go into rooms where there are, you know, floor plans that look great because it's just a, you stretched it this or that, and you put it on the thing and said, okay, fit everything in this room. You actually get to the process, and it's not always that way. I can throw a baseball from my property to over here if I wanted to, it is not that far, you know, I'm not, I'm not 18 anymore, you know, I can't, I'm not, I'm not gunning it in for 400 feet, you know, it's not, that's not that big of a distance there, so it's just, again, it's like, it looks like a big lot, but it's very, it's not very wide, you know, and it's, that's a lot of people in that, in that space, even with 12 units, that's a lot, that's a lot of people in that space. So it's just, I, I also have concerns about the water table here. There's never been this many houses here, and when I moved in, I don't know anything about wells, and I lived in a city area, you know, for most of my adult life until I moved here, I had to learn about wells, you know, so I, I don't know a lot about this, but I do know that there's aquifers under the water, under the, under the ground, and that to some degree, sometimes we share these aquifers, okay? It's, I'm curious as to what would happen in a situation if we have another drought like we have this year, and we suddenly have 20, you know, you know, 10 more houses or 12 houses or whatever, pulling from that same aquifer that we all have. You know, it's, you know, this year was a concerning drought, you know, it really was, and I, all year, we didn't even run our pool this year because I was like conserving water to make sure that we didn't kick the well, you know, and it's, you know, I, I would like to see some documentation from the state or someone that says that there is truly enough water under the ground here for that many people, you know, or if it is going to be from the, you know, from the street, you know, so that's, that's one of the things I have a concern about also, you know, septic, you know, how is that going to affect my well, you know, in one of the plans, there was a septic, is there a septic pond or something back here it looked like, you know, communal drainage, how is that going to affect my water over here, you know, it might not affect anyone else's, but my, that's my property here, and that's a massive septic thing for a huge unit, especially on the, on the, on the big, you know, on the big one, you know, that's what they were planning, okay? That, that just seems like an egregious and negligent disrespect for our property and our water supply in our area, and the, and the health of that water, you know, that's, that's a lot, again, it's a lot of units, it's a lot of units, so, you know, it's a lot of people, that's my concern. I would ask, you know, the board consider, you know, what is the actual maximum amount of houses per town bylaws that can be on, you know, on lot by square footage? I would ask that if this development does go forward, that they would be the ones that would pay for an eight-foot-tall privacy fence along the length, along the length of it, giving true privacy to everyone that's back there. I'd ask that any lighting be installed along this driveway, and I don't know what plan it is, but, you know, I know a lot of condominium units, they have, you know, you know, communal lighting down the driveway. That light pollution is so, being able to see stars is such a big thing, it really is, so I would ask that any lighting that gets put in, if this plan moves forward or something like this, that it considers light pollution, and that we put in fixtures that don't have, you know, you know, just excessive light going everywhere. I ask that they try to replace the trees, you know, it's, one of the things that really drew us to this neighborhood and this whole area was the trees, and like, if you notice, all the neighbors in that whole, that whole Paddock Hill area, we all have a tree bower, and we might be new here, it's a couple of years, but that tells me something about that, the community appreciated being surrounded by trees, and that, that's, that's important, you know, you know, there aren't fences everywhere, but there are trees, and that, that's an important, important thing. Obviously, none of us had people directly in our backyards before, so if, especially my, my yard, you know, in terms of backyards, is very close to where this would be, there's, our, our property makes a weird little, you know, line up here, you know, to meet the, what was, I guess at the time, the standard for what would be required in terms of land needed to build a residence, so if you, a lot of the houses have these tiny little points coming around to make that minimum, and as a result, where my house currently is, there is not a lot of space from my property to there, so it would be a complete loss of privacy, so like, that, that privacy fence would be, would be really, really crucial. Yes, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I just, my, my element there.
I'd like to just understand your preference, you've seen the original plans, now you've seen a revised plan, do you have any preference here?
I.
It's not the option, right?
My, my, my preference is that it would, it would hold to the town code, like, am I wrong in saying that there isn't a town, that there's a town code that says there has to be 7,000 square feet, or is that changed?
This is a comprehensive permit, so.
Comprehensive, okay, so it's different.
It includes 40B housing, so.
Okay, so it basically, it's basically overrides town code.
Correct.
Okay. If that is the case, I, you know, my preference would be that whatever is done here, you know, does as much as they can to respect the people who currently live here, you know, and, and have their houses, you know, abutted onto this, you know, this property, and, you know, it's, it's, it, you know, and then if anything was to be put in, it's like, like I said, you know, an eight-foot-tall privacy fence, I think would be very important, the planting of trees, any light pollution, anything that can be done to emit light pollution. I honestly think 12 houses is way too many, like, that's, that's, you know, that's nuts, like, you can look at it, this is not, this lot is, is not good enough for that, I'm sorry, so that's, that's what I have to say.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to read the, some correspondence I have into the record before we go any further with comments. This is from the Planning Board to the Board of Appeals from October 14th, 2020. Petition review for North Bedford Crossing LLC, 109 Bedford Street. At their Thursday, October 13th meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above-petition referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board made a motion to recommend to the Zoning Board of Appeals that the affordable units in the proposed project be held in perpetuity as permanently affordable. That's all I got from the Planning Board. From the Board of Health, in their letter dated October 7th, we received a copy of the petition for hearing for 109 Bedford Street from Zenith Consulting Engineers dated September 19th, 2022. The soils on the lot are sufficient to sustain a septic system for the proposed 20-unit dwelling units on the lot, and the dwellings will be connected to the municipal water, eliminating the need for a well. Thus, the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed site.
Is the developer part of the Board of Health on the board?
Is he?
Yeah.
Is he on the Board of Health?
As far as I know, he is, right? Yes. He recused himself, hopefully.
Yes, he always does.
He always does? Okay. Then I have one from the Select Board Office, from Airy Sky Town Administrator, 109 Bedford Street Comprehensive Permit Application. The date's October 18th, 2022. At their meeting on October 11th, 2022, the Select Board reviewed the Comprehensive Permit Application for the property located at 109 Bedford Street for New Bedford, North Bedford Crossing LLC. In regards to the application, the Board had the following comments. Chairman LaCamera noted that every unit is located in the buffer zone and is not 20 feet away from the adjacent lot lines. Also, all porches decks are within the buffer zone, which is not allowed. He also recommended the exterior design of the building be, could be better, for example, 40B project on Rhode Island Road. The market analysis was missing from the application as well, as the condominium agreements. Previously, the Select Board requested that at least two units with two, two bedrooms, with the first four bedroom, be set aside for the 55-plus occupants, and one should be an affordable unit. I have also attached a letter to the Select Board, sent to the Mass. Housing Finance Agency for your review. Do you think we need readership? That if anybody really wants to know what they have to say, you can get it from the, from the website, or get a copy at the Planning, Town Planning Office. That's what the boards. Okay, we have a, another one from Conservation. Hi Kathy, sorry to be so late, there are no conservation issues with the 10, oh, that's this one. Okay, there are, there are significant wetlands within a 100-foot buffer Okay, there are, there are significant wetlands within a 100-foot buffer from the southwestern edge of the property on 109 Bedford Street. A request for determination of applicability or notice of intent may be required for further examination. Bob. So the Concom is also aware of it. Any other comments from the public?
I just have one thing I would like to add quickly.
Come on up.
All I want to say is, I spoke to my wife who's here also, and if we had a choice, if we had a first choice, we wouldn't have anything.
Yes.
Our second choice is we prefer this design over the other.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Ned Nemec, and my wife, Kim, together own the budding property along the entire length to the south, 113 Bedford Street. And I'm not even sure if this is the right venue, per se, to bring this up, you tell me. But one of our first concerns is that it turns out apparently after surveying this for the development, apparently the property line comes well onto established driveway here. And I guess one question would be, would we be entitled to a historical easement or right of way or something along these lines, per se?
Yes.
That's not here?
That's not here.
Okay, very good. Where do we go?
Go get a lawyer.
Okay, all right, okay. That's my question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, come on up.
So.
Come on up, identify yourself.
My name's Joe Hamilton, I live across the street from this property. So what you're, what you people are doing, you're waiving the standard building code for the town.
That's part of the.
On the lot size.
Right, that's part of the 40B comprehensive permit, the process.
I see, okay.
That's how they get, that's, there it goes. Jamie, your thing's going to fall down. Basically, it, with the comprehensive permit, they waive the zoning requirements with the idea a certain percentage, 25% in this case, is affordable. And that's, that's the give and take.
I see.
That's one of the ways they get affordable housing.
What I'm worried about is that there's some people in this area that have shallow wells.
But again, they're part of the process, they would not, they would be, have to get their water from the ton water supply.
It's not available. Across the street on Surrey Drive, there's none, nothing available there.
Then that's their problem.
No, that's not our, that's not our problem.
As I said, that's their problem.
Yeah.
It's the developer's problem, it's not our problem. They have to provide. If they had to provide a well for each house, they probably couldn't do it.
Or a water main to go up through Surrey Drive and come out carriage.
That, that's.
Off the, off the ton water, like you said, there's plenty of water.
Right, but it'd be ton water.
Those are, that's what I'm worried about, you know. I mean, if you build standard housing in there, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But now you've got all these units. That's a lot of sewage, and there's no sewers in the town.
Nope.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, any other comments? Come on up.
How you doing? Bill Kenny from 3 Surrey Drive, about 200 feet or so to the east-northeast of this project. And I was just curious and just kind of wanted to make it public record that zoning regulations and bylaws in this area exist for a reason, for safety, for safety of drinking water. Is there nothing that the Board can do for that to protect the towns, the town people and others?
It's developer's responsibility to provide water to the project. They're proposing they get the water from a public water supply, which would be ton water.
That's for the project, the people who live in the project.
Right.
However, discharge of wastewater to an aquifer, especially an aquifer that could be struggling at times, could cause issues with off-site sources.
Right, but that is a Board of Health regulation. The Board of Health, we're not the Board of Health.
Fair enough, but it's part of public record now.
Yes, it is.
And that you're aware of this, everyone.
It's a public record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Well, what do you want to do? Go with the 20-unit, 10 duplex units, or do you want them to go with the 12 single-family homes?
I prefer the, the new plan, it was made today with the 12 units. I'd make a condition, I've just asked that the new, these new plans get redistributed to all the boards for comment and review.
Okay, they have to, they have to design it, basically. This is just put together.
I'd agree with that. I'd like to see this option explored more, more detail. Increase the density, give some relief on the setbacks, more opportunity to create buffer zones, plantings. I just think that's a better fit for the property, so narrow.
I don't know if this is the mechanism where we, the Board, if they would recommend or give guidance to the developer to go back and to change. And do we need a vote of Board members here?
No, I think, I think it's pretty clear based on comments from the public and the Board.
As far as I'm concerned, the Board would rather, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, the Board would rather you go with the 12-unit and go with that on that.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we continue this matter to another hearing date so we can get to work on this revised content.
How long, how long would you need?
Well, I'm going to ask for 30 days, that's probably not realistic, but I, I'd like, this board meets monthly.
Monthly, right.
Yeah, I'd ask to be put on the next, next meeting date, and if I have to ask for a continuance, so be it.
Well, our next meeting is on, I believe.
No, the next meeting is on November 3.
November 3, so it's not even a month.
Beyond the December.
Yeah, the December, that'd probably work out better, actually.
The next meeting is November 17.
We have one on the 3rd and the 17th?
Wait, no, 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 no.
We just the 3rd.
Do we have two for November?
Nope, we only have one.
Yeah, it's the 17th, and December's meeting would be the 15th.
I thought we're having one on November 3rd, too.
Two, two next month.
We're going to have two next month. Got it. Can you make the 17th?
Yeah, let's shoot for the 17th, and if we can't make it, then we request a continuance and extend the time for the Board to make its decision.
So.
Yeah, that's good. I'm making, if somebody will make a motion, we'd say they continue the hearing to November 17th.
I'll make said motion to continue the hearing to November 17 with the request that the plans get resubmitted to the respective boards in the town.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you in a month.
Yep. All right, who do we have left? Prove me, anybody look at the, the minutes? I did, I didn't see anything wrong, so. Kathy, we're there, good.
Were we all here for September?
Members present, I was here. You were here.
Yep.
Yeah, we're all here.
We have a forum to vote?
We have a forum to vote.
I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 15th. Please, please. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
People, hey. 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 Go outside and carry on the conversation. No, we're not.
No.
Okay, that's, we have, the next, the next meeting is November 3.
Yes.
And then we have, what's on the next meeting, just the.
Just LeBaron.
Then I'm not here. Okay, so I'm, you guys get to go twice next one. And the next one after that's the 17th?
Yes.
Obviously.
So, 17th, I'm going to be in New York on the 17th, not the 11th.
I will. Whoa.
Well.
Oh, yeah, whoa.
I thought it was good that it got moved. I guess I thought it got moved, didn't I?
Are we going to, Chris will have to be here, Carmichael will have to be here.
Well.
I'll double check.
Yeah, well, we would have to do the same thing as you did. LeBaron's, if he's not here, is to just vote to continue it and not take any public comment. And move it to December.
Okay.
You know, if you can't make it, great, and if you can't, that's what would have to happen.
Yeah.
So.
May I ask a question regarding procedures?
Yes.
When I was here for, when my wife and I were here for a previous meeting, the August meeting, I believe, I read a statement, and I hoped that it would get into the record. What we've seen on the minutes doesn't indicate that this became a, did I need to bring more copies? Is it, I don't know.
It wasn't included in any of the attachments, so we approved the minutes.
You're from Wupon, right? Yeah, no, I remember saying that you had made a statement. That is in the record as far as being attached to the record in the folder. We don't usually typically attach documents to the minutes.
Okay.
But it is within the LeBaron record.
I just want to make sure that the Board is aware of the said and proposed. I don't know if there's a better way to do it or not.
Like I said, usually if someone reads something, you know, the minutes are mostly just a summary of that. But anything that's submitted or said goes into the actual, say, the folder of record of LeBaron. So it is included in that.
So then all members sitting should know the contents of this and what we've asked them. Am I correct?
They should, yeah.
Did you read that at the first hearing?
Yes.
So then the members who were here heard the letter and for the record, it gets placed in the file. So anyone who reviews the file will see the letter. But the Board, if you read it at the hearing, that's your comment, right? That's your public comment. You also submitted writing, as you saw tonight, nobody submitted their comments in writing, they just talked, right? So you did both, so, but that's where your written comments would go, is in the file of record for the project.
So I don't need to?
No, it's in the file, it's in the file of record.
Okay, okay.
Are you also planning to attend a meeting on November 3?
Sure.
Right? You can certainly read them into the record again, too.
I don't want to waste your time, is it?
No, this is your time, not, not our time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, guys? You're the most, close your hand.
I'll make said motion.
Seconded?
I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.